Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Can I just get a sound check and a quick test from the sporting that everything's working okay, please?
Uh, sound check, loud and clear.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks. Good morning, everybody. To so you see how we call this sun in June, when the clouds are kind of right. Good to be here. IPAC headquarters, so nice to see the place. Together, we're focused on some budget issues carry over from the annual meeting and related operational issues.
So the first course of business then is the adoption of the agenda. So secretary, if you could spring the agenda up and I'll pass back to commissions to see if there's any amendments. Seeing any. Perfect. The mic's not working. Yeah, we just tested it. Okay, it was work. Okay. All right, so we will step through the agenda then. So there's no amendments. We can consider the agenda adopted. The list of documents is also provided at document O two for your information. And we can step straight into agenda items three. And so, secretary, if you could bring paper O three, Rev one up on the screen, please. Okay, so for agenda item three, there are two core papers that have been provided. The first is the standard budget paper or budget estimates. So paper O three, Rev one, and this is the budget estimates for FY twenty twenty four, which is for adoption or potential adoption. Adoption and then also twenty five and twenty six for general information, just noting at this point in time. There is also a paper O four, which is being provided in support of this paper and the budget as a whole. And I'll walk through what that paper is about specifically in just a short while. Essentially, it's information in support of the commissioners making any potential decision on budgets of this special session. So the purpose of paper O three, Rev one, as I said, is essentially to provide budget estimates for FY twenty twenty four for consideration for adoption. We are having this special session based on the discussions at the ninety ninth session of the IPAC annual meeting in January of this year, where the commission decided that it would like to have some intercessional discussions over the subsequent months prior to making any formal decision on an FY twenty twenty four budget. Paper O three, and as I said, I'm going to step through this relatively quickly because paper O four has the details and explanations for for most of these items. So the FY twenty twenty four income and expense estimates are provided at appendix one of this paper, and I'll scan down to that in just a short moment. It consists of base contributions for Canada and the United States. For Canada, the proposed budget is just over one million dollars and for the US, just over four point seven million dollars. And this increase is made based on some general cost assumptions, which includes roughly three point five percent costs in core operational aspects of our budget. Salaries and wages of three point five percent based on cost of living and step increases in accordance with general agreement with the US service civil service guidelines. And our standard healthcare cost estimate increase of around twelve percent. It's important to note that this is a substantial increase from last year's budget, noting that that last year's budget and the two prior had been frozen at twenty twenty one levels. Provided in this paper are two figures, which I'll step through in a little bit more detail in the next paper, that it just gives you the history of the contracting party contributions, as well as shown in the gray line, the total contributions for the general fund, which is now funds ten, twenty and thirty. So this excludes Fund forty, which is the Fishery Independent Set Line Survey. When considering in real dollar terms, the contributions adjusted for inflation from in relation to twenty twenty two US dollars are provided in the second figure. And you can see that since roughly two thousand and fourteen, the real dollar term contributions have have been in decline, more or less for for about a decade now. And the dotted point here is the proposed FY twenty twenty four increase. The headquarters lease and maintenance component, which is paid for by the US, will increase to just over five hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty four, and this is in accordance with the building lease that was signed in twenty twenty and will expire. I think twenty fifth of September twenty twenty five. The deficit payments to the International Fisheries Commission Pension Fund remain at a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars, just over. And just a reminder that this fund was closed in two thousand and one to new entrants. And so this is it will undergo a reevaluation or has already undergone a reevaluation and will be presented to the society at next week's meeting in San Diego. As I mentioned at the start, the Fishery Independent Set Line Survey components are very tentative and are entirely a prediction based on what we think you will likely decide at the interim meeting and annual meeting next year, twenty twenty four. So please just to take that with a grain of sand, salt rather, or sand, depending on where you're from. And just note that that's likely to change substantially as we have done this year. So there was a ten year, sorry, through the chair, there was a ten year amateurized calculation. So when the fund is reevaluated every three years, it is then determined what the total deficit is and what payment plan would look like over ten years, so the next ten years. Of course, every three years rolls on, just as we have have done this year, and then that amount is recalculated. So in theory, it will continue indefinitely based on the markets, performance of the markets where the pension fund is invested.
So the deficit payment requirement is required.
Through the chair, unless the market has a substantial upturn, and at that point, if there's a evaluation, a three year evaluation, and it shows that there is now sufficient funds held with by the society to pay out pensions. Yeah, at that point, it would be reduced to zero.
Still, where is the money invested? I mean, the markets are not as great as they were a while ago, but it seems constantly putting money to this. I guess this is my own experience, so it's a little better than having to top up. But I guess the question is why are, where's the money, what's there?
So it's managed by the by a company called Mercer and primarily DFO and State Department supervise that with the society itself, so the board members. It is invested just as other US pension funds, our main superannuation, I forgot what they call it here now, a four oh three B. It's invested in a range of share options. And that's all done through the society, and that has been passed to Mercer, the investment fund manager. And so I'll just highlight, sorry, sorry, Commissioner, we do since two thousand and one, all of the other staff have been moved to mutual, which is our four oh three B in the US. So we only have one active staff member still in this pension fund. The rest are all retirees. Sorry, Commissioner.
So the question I have is it closed in two thousand and one. And if all but one are retired, as they pass, this decline, this obligation decline.
Yes, through through the chair, the answer is yes, it will decline. This is one of the old style pension funds, though. And so when a staff member, former staff member does pass, it's passed to their spouse. And so it's it's you're looking at a probably another forty years.
Forty.
Yeah, I guess. I mean, it's all about longevity, staff longevity, former staff longevity and spouse longevity.
Did you not say it passed to their dependents as well? That's particular one?
There, there's, there's a component that's past, yes. So there are a number of key assumptions associated with the budget to be proposed for twenty twenty four. One of them, probably the main, is the component that's incorporated for the cost recovery grants program through NOAA for our port sampling program or our commercial fishery sampling program throughout Alaska. And we do have a substantial number of slides and other information that we're going to walk through associated with this, and I think it's other other business as well. So I don't intend on spending too much time at this point, but I will under paper O four, just. But very briefly, our current estimate that we've included as income in the budget is nine hundred fifty three thousand, which is about a third of the total budget for thirty statistics for our entire port sampling program co-spired. And so we have that grant for the next five years, which has tentatively been submitted. And as I said, we're going to spend quite a bit of time discussing that. And so maybe I'll ask it, hold off additional discussion on that until I can bring up those other slides. In FY twenty twenty three and also FY twenty twenty two, we're able to hold several positions vacant to accommodate the budget freeze that was for for the past three years. And in addition to that, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, we're able to reduce other costs such as travel and meetings, which was, which allowed us to meet to the budget freeze over the past three years. So the assumption moving ahead for FY twenty twenty four is that we will have a full staff complement and move back towards full staff travel and meeting commitments, noting some caveats, which I'll which I'll walk you through in just a while, a short while. The FY twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six income and expenses that are proposed are again just nominal increases at this point in time, similar to those for twenty twenty four, with a three point five percent estimated increase in operational costs, similar for salaries and wages, and again, an estimate of a twelve percent increase in healthcare costs for for each of those years. And so, as I said, those are just a bit of information. So the recommendations associated with this paper is firstly to note the content that's being provided. And we are proposing to adopt an FY twenty twenty four budget, noting that we have substantial discussions to occur over the next couple of hours, particularly around paper O four and others. And then also to note the optional extra budgetary contributions for the pension fund. And I'll just highlight again that those are optional. They are amateurized over ten years, and the implication, if the contracting parties simply decide that they're not going to provide it in a given year, is that the next valuation of the plan, the deficit may increase, may also decrease depending on the performance of the fund itself. And then just to note the FY twenty twenty four and twenty twenty six budgets. So I'll pause there, noting that paper O four will have substantial upper additional details and see if there's any final questions.
Yeah. So two thousand salaries increase. I guess they say they increase by almost four hundred thousand.
I I will get into it. So so maybe that can be one of the first things we'll tackle in the next presentation, but I can touch base on it quickly. In in the short version is that we were holding a number of positions vacant during that during that time during COVID. And as a result of the budget freeze in twenty twenty one, and then knowing that it was going into twenty twenty two as well, we didn't budget for those positions. And so we held we held the vacant, and as a result, the salaries were were not included in the proposed and adopted budgets.
So what what do you consider a full staff?
So a full staff complement at the moment is thirty three FGEs, full time employees in the headquarters office. We have nine to ten port samplers or fisheries data specialists co-spired. And as I said, I'm going to get into a little bit more detail of those. And then the Fishery Independent Set Line Survey, which are separate, it changes on any given year from fifteen to thirty five. But for the headquarters office, you thirty three is what we have. So maybe what I'll ask is if the presentation for paper four could be brought up, please? So the purpose of paper O four, and this is the accompanying PowerPoint presentation, is to provide the commission with supporting information as you move through this budget decision-making process today. There's a little bit of background subsequent to the ninety ninth session. At the annual meeting held earlier this year, contracting parties agreed to provide secretariat with set of clarifying questions and information request by mid March. That was achieved, and the following were subsequently provided as a request from contracting parties to the secretariat. There were four core areas and a number of sub points that are associated with each of these points, and I'm going to walk through each of those in detail. The first surrounding income sources, timing and how it's applied to expenses throughout a given year. Any specific line items that have experienced significant change over the last five years. Headquarters and other facility rentals and a review of staff and the creation of the fisheries policy branch. And so if we focus on the first point or the first core request, I'll step through those. So as part of this first request, there were three sub points, and and I'm not going to read these out, but I'm going to step through each of these dot points with supporting information or clarifying information. Associated with appendix one of paper O three is the full proposed FY twenty twenty four budget and the first half of that table, which you can see on screen, details, all of the income sources that we'll be stepping through. Yes, go ahead.
Just on this, WDFW rock for sampling, is that BC or is that Washington state?
Washington Department of Fish.
Okay, Washington, okay.
Okay, so the first source of income and the primary source of income is obviously contracting party contributions to the general fund. And this includes allocations across funds ten, twenty and thirty. The date that that income is expected, it falls due on one October of twenty twenty three and one October of each year for each fiscal year, so the first day of the fiscal year. And this income covers all operating expenses, not covered by other sources of income, which I'll step through over the coming slides. The expenses associated or charged against this income source are accrued monthly commencing one October, and that is achieved with our accounting firm, some real associates who reconcile by the twenty first of each month for the prior month. In terms of historical perspective, and and so this is just the those four points that were asked for as part of each of these these queries from contracting parties. I can step you through the contributions from each contracting party from nineteen eighty six to FY twenty twenty three, which are the actuals, and also twenty twenty four. So this is just that figure associated with paper O three as well. It details the raw contributions in US dollars, Canadian values in blue, US values in orange, and the total combined in gray. And you can see that up until FY two thousand, the contributions were split fifty fifty from each contracting party. I will also make a note, now that's reminded me, that the current default split between the contracting parties for the FY twenty twenty four and recent recent budgets is eighteen eighty two. And there's no specific decision that's been made surrounding that percentage. It's my understanding of this, that's just what has been applied over time.
To for historical perspective, do you know what happened in two thousand?
Yeah, sorry, through through the chair, there was reasonable documentation and State Department might be able to to add some additional comments. There was concerted effort within the the US to seek additional appropriations from Congress to undertake a number of core projects, and they range from a research project that was conducted up in the Bering Sea, I believe, as well as additional operational requests that have been made by the secretariat over a number of years, noting that the real dollar value of contributions had been declining in the years immediately prior. And that's represented in in the next plot, where you can see that if I step to the contracting party contributions adjusted for inflation from nineteen eighty six through two thousand, the real value of those contributions had been in constant decline. So there was a recognition in the annual meeting minutes, and then also a concerted effort from from the US to see conditional appropriations from Congress for the secretariat's operations. And so just on this slide, it it does show that up until two thousand, the real value was was in decline. Then we have a period of increase from the United States up until, I believe, it's around two thousand and fourteen, where the real value of contributions has been more or less in decline till FY twenty twenty three. And again, you can see this proposed budget increase for twenty twenty four and what that would mean in in real dollar terms, so twenty twenty two dollars still represents a more or less decline from two thousand and fourteen to twenty.
Two thousand.
I, through the chair, what I've been trying to dig out and and read through, it was primarily a a slow reduction in the essential purchasing power of the contributions. And the documents that I've been able to find all point to a reduced effectiveness of the contributions to pay salaries was one of the core components. And over that period in the years immediately prior, documented in the minutes are references to not filling vacancies, similar to what we've been experiencing for the last couple of years, where we've deliberately held positions vacant. Is also documented in minutes as one of the justifications. And as I said, other justifications were for additional projects that were going to be undertaken within US boards. One of them was a research project. I don't know the specifics of it. And then I also understand that there was also a reference to the expanding fisheries and the move away from the pre IFQ fisheries into the derby style fisheries to the IFQ fisheries management. But I haven't been able to dig out sufficient information to really put a finger on what that money was slated.
Expanding fisheries.
There's reference to the fisheries expansion, but it's not fully documented, unfortunately. Think I've already gone over this slide, which refers to sort of in real dollar terms, what the contributions have meant in relation to US inflation over the years. And particularly when we look at the last couple of years, when the budget has been frozen and with the CPI declining from six point four to six point six in the last twelve months. There is, there is a chance that the impacts of annual inflation will decline, but it's the budget projection is is based on the FY twenty twenty two estimates. The second primary income source relates to the headquarters lease, and this is an end income source which is paid for entirely by the US, and this is typical for for most headquarters locations for fisheries commissions globally. And this, in terms of date income is expected, it's the same as the general contributions to the general fund, which were on first of October twenty twenty. So this income source covers the headquarters lease and associated building maintenance charges from from our. The lease, as I mentioned, is going to expire on the thirtieth of September twenty twenty five, and it's a discussion that will need to be held relatively soon with the United States and particularly State Department about how we're going to proceed with either renewing, looking to renew the current lease or look at other options. And there's also a graphic which is provided as part of slide thirteen, which just gives you a look back from twenty twenty, sorry, yes, twenty thirteen to FY twenty twenty four. And you can see a steep increase every four years there, which is incorporated into the lease itself. Thirtyth of September.
So likely the price is going to go up.
It's a, it's an interesting question through the through through the chair. It may well go down depending on the market situation. It is typically when a lease is expiring at this sort of timeframe, we would commence very shortly that process of looking for RFTs, looking for competitive offers from other sites against our current landlord providing a new proposal to us. With Seattle market prices potentially going down as a result of office vacancies in Seattle, there's also the possibility that it won't. It's it's an unknown at the moment, and that's why we'll go out for a request for for essentially offers a number of similar facilities, both in Seattle, but depending on discussions with the US State Department, potentially other locations as well. Without the pandemic having occurred, I would say, yes, the the prices would have continued to increase. But having just come out of the pandemic, it puts a question mark with real estate prices and rental prices, the commercial space in Seattle.
What about the secretariat's requirements for space?
Um, thanks, Chair. No, I don't. If we were to make make a couple of assumptions, assumption that the staff numbers stay the same and that we maintain a similar footprint for each individual staff member. If it was to change in terms of what our telecommuting policy is, where at the moment we allow staff to spend fifty percent of the time in the office and fifty percent of the time working remotely, there are options associated with that to condense the footprint of the office space. So there's just a couple of options that would be walked through to see what we could either economize or maintain status quo.
How many people are utilizing, how many staff are utilizing telephone? Working from home.
Thanks. Through the chair, about two thirds, I think, from from memory, and I can bring up that exact number.
To halftime.
Up to halftime, yes. And so some stuff are, we have a flexible schedule where staff can work ten-hour days for four days a week, where they can work nine days and a fortnight, where they can make it two and a half days in the office, two and a half days working remotely. So it's a very flexible arrangement. It's just as long as it's centered there, weekly work hours or. Now, through the chair, so if you cast your memory back to when we renewed this current lease, we explored a number of options at that time and we decided that it wasn't physically viable to make a move. But at that time, we did explore, for example, looking at Bellingham, looking at other office facilities in Seattle. The convention mentions within five miles of University of Washington, but we're not consistent with that already. So I think that's pretty flexible, depending on the host country. But there are a number of options that we looked at last time.
It's a significant change.
At that time, it would have been a significant saving in the office costs in terms of the dollar per square foot. It would have been significantly less. One of the components in that decision was the staff turnover that could potentially result from that. And that's also why we only renewed for five years and not ten years to keep that as a relatively near term, previous to that decision. Okay, the next source of income is associated with recoup to leave expenses. And this is a relatively new source of income associated with our transition from a BOA to GAAP accounting. And so in some ways, this is really just a revenue neutral income source. As we are budgeting salaries, when staff take their annual leave, it's now, in accordance with GAAP, counted for as income within our books. And associated with that is a decrease in the salary that are extended in the budget. So it's a balance component. Sorry, yes.
Yeah, just on that, do you use last year's prediction of leave or comparative? Or is that?
Correct. So it's literally plus the three point five percent estimate increase in salaries and wages is the three point five percent increase in recoup to leave income estimate. Because essentially they're transferred from an expense to an income. Another new source of income is the rent for the Dutch Harbor accommodation. And this, I won't go through all the details, other than to say that this is a one-bedroom apartment, which is a lease in Dutch Harbor for field stock use. And this is a relatively new lease, which we signed on eighteenth of April in twenty twenty-two as a function of the lack of accommodation. The Fisheries Data Specialist in Dutch Harbor. There is such a demand for accommodation up there that in late twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-two, when we had our Fisheries Data Specialist resign and move to undertake a higher education, when her apartment was given up at that point, it's commercial interest. When we tried to find other accommodation for the replacement staff member, we were unable to. And so we had to put that staff member up in a hotel, in the Hotel from Dutch Harbor for three months. And with that in mind, it's cheaper to rent an apartment on an ongoing basis than to run that level of risk to the budget for unbudgeted expense.
I struggled to understand how this one was income, like a cost.
It's a cost and an income. And this is the income component because it's a subsidized housing. So the Fisheries Data Specialist pays eight hundred dollars a month from their salary towards the rent of the property.
So it's a net cost, but it's accounting the eight hundred dollars back from staff members.
As an income, under GAAP accounting practices, essentially it's almost the same as the recoup to leave expenses, where we have a lease that we're paying, just like we are paying salaries. But when somebody takes leave or when there's a fisheries data specialist in the apartment, they are providing income back into the accounts.
What happens if the Fisheries Data Specialist is there for three months a year?
For about ten months, eight to ten months, depending. All right, so there's only a couple of months a year where we're paying for the former.
Subsidized housing is pretty common in Dutch. We have some staff out there. Fishery management program, law enforcement people. See for inspection. Their arrangement is similar to this because of the extraordinarily limited options and high cost.
Are you not so leasing?
The other primary source of income, income source number five, as shown in the paper, is from Grant eight oh two, which is the directed commercial catch sampling of Pacific Halibut in Alaska. And I'll refer you to information paper O two for that current draft proposal. This is, we apply for reimbursement or income on a quarterly basis through the federal grants program portal. And this, as I said, this is the second five-year grant from NOAA in this regard, with this current grant for FY twenty twenty-three expiring on the thirtieth of September. And so, as I said, provided information in paper O two is the current draft proposed grant agreement for the next five years. The grant itself is meant to cover the post IFQ port sampling costs for Pacific Halibut in Alaskan waters. And as you can see on the screen and in the paper and in the presentation, we are proposing an income through the grant for nine hundred and fifty-three for FY twenty twenty-four and then progressing up to one point two six seven in twenty twenty-eight.
Ready for questions on this? I have quite a few. So in no particular order, this grant in the past, you've titled it for sampling Pacific Halibut, but the past covered Halibut and sablefish, is that correct?
So the last grant, through the chair, the last grant, yes, included sablefish. And that occurred from twenty eighteen, so eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. This year as well.
Yep. And the amounts of that in the last couple of years?
So I do have some additional slides.
Just ballpark.
So the amount received in twenty twenty-three, we're expecting six hundred and twenty-one thousand. And then you can see the walk back there in twenty twenty-two was three hundred and seventy-eight received, twenty-one, twenty and nineteen.
Okay, so you've proposed nine hundred and fifty-three for this year and then ramping up to one point two million. It's a pretty sharp escalation in amounts there.
Through the chair, in short, two components. One is underbudgeting and the second is a fixed amount being provided or being informed, advised that it's going to be provided from NOAA to the secretary rather than actuals, what we actually estimated is going to be.
Is that different than what's happened in the past, text and all?
Yes. Okay. So I do have a number of slides. At the end of this presentation, I was holding those for the other business, but I can jump to them if you like, and it sort of provides that entire history. You can either jump to those or hold off.
I mean, I can save more detailed questions for them if that's when you prepare this.
I can do it any time.
So underbudgeting, so I assume that means there are some costs that the secretariat have not been charging to this that arguably should have been charged.
Through the chair, not quite. What I'm saying is that the expenses and budget were being provided to the grantors who were indicating that there was only a limited funding available and this was the cap.
Yeah, and that's consistent with my understanding. It's the cost recovery funds. It's not a pool, it's a certain percentage, it's a three percent. Up to three percent. It's paid into it and so.
I mean, it's in that three percent here, it's limited to what it can actually charge. So I had a question. Is this, is this where the port samplers are looking at the logbooks and taking work lists at the dock? So did we do something like that for sablefish?
Through the chair, yes.
So if it, speaking of sablefish, if it weren't for you're needing to wait for the information from the National Fish Science Center, priorities for sablefish, would you have submitted an application for both Halibut and sablefish?
If there was a commission directive to, yes. And I guess that's the predicament that we're in, having, coming off a previous grant for five years with the new grant being written and establishing the budget shortfalls that we've encountered over the last number of years and needing to have this budget discussion as well surrounding twenty twenty-four and beyond. And I'll be direct, we drafted with sablefish elements ready, depending on how the commission would like to see.
Now, my understanding of this is not complete by any means, but my impression is the cost recovery funds that are available for this grant are both Halibut and sablefish. It's not any Halibut. I mean, it's funding that's charged to the industry, to the IFQ holders for both Halibut and sablefish. It's not, it doesn't prioritize Halibut or sablefish. Can be used to ride. And the grant, if it's if it is useful for the secretariat to partition it. My understanding is that that can be done through different tasks. They can be mingled, but it's a good reason to have it separated. And I understand, Paul, that there have been concern about general Halibut Commission funding being used for sablefish work. I understand the basis for that concern. But given that this is money from the Halibut and Sablefish Program, it can be used for both. Seems to me it's primarily an issue of just trying to scale the available funds to work that needs doing to make sure that there are not cost overruns. The secretariat isn't committing to work beyond the source of funding to cover.
That's the summit, certainly, that I thought.
So that's one concern. The other concern to me is, is this an activity that the secretariat should be? So I guess the question I have, John, of getting into the details of what they're going to do to sort of figure is whether we should have the secretariat do this. That's where I started from. Yeah, I understand the question. To me, it's important to think about overall efficiencies. To the extent that there are port samplers out there and people doing data entry and collecting data from the same vessels temporarily, much more efficient for those same individuals to be collecting data for both species, I think, than having this Alaska Fisheries Science Center, but people have to do the same thing.
We can cover the costs.
So it doesn't cost anything. So I don't see a downside. And I realize there have been some issues with the cost being covered in recent years.
Well, just recent years, there is a lot.
Well, I don't know the answer.
I don't know, but that's the question. Do you know how long, Dave?
I can, and I'll bring the slides up because I think they're helping it might smooth the discussion. Unfortunately, with this platform, I do not know how to jump sixty slides. So, Secretary, are you able to jump to Slide seventy-one, for example?
So, John, I think I should see that you and I have talked. But what side of it is? What I'm seeing right now is more efficiency. And I'd like to understand why NOAA doesn't do it, they could apply for the same funds. I think it's one thing that efficiency of collecting logbooks by someone's already there, it's an efficiency. Yeah, but then taking that and doing data entry. Could be that anywhere. Yeah, I don't understand the mechanics of that well enough. It's literally the same page in a logbook that has Halibut data and sablefish data.
But then I see that we have people that are funded by partners to collect Halibut. So now they're doing other work that is US work. I start to see that they get into more detail.
Yeah, I mean, these things do get messy. You know, the US also provides considerable Halibut data to the Commission from the draw certain. There's a lot of data cooperation and sharing that happens without.
It's more than I learned about this one. The program, the Halibut Sablefish Program is looked at as a single program by US government as approved as a simple program. So the three percent fee that is applied, or up to three percent fee is against is against the Busher bonus, they pay before January third or something like that. And if someone has more Halibut than they got half, more blackeye than they got Halibut or more Halibut than they got blackeye, it all gets, the money gets all mixed together with send in, send in the, it's not allocated by the species, it's one pot of money. Our logbooks are set up so that they're Halibut, sablefish, federal logbooks. Our guys deliver, will deliver two trips of blackeye and then a trip of Halibut, all on the same logbook page. So from my perspective, our guys paying into this, there's a logic to have, like I look at the same data. About, I don't know about keep punching the data in, it should be, keep punching their own data in. I don't know how much that's cost of doing business.
Well, I mean, they started to put together a sheet of what the costs were for the secretariat. When I started to see what those costs are, it's not completed, and he's going to update, it's not insignificant. And so we're, you know, it's a party contribution to pay to sell or others. And so, like, it started to end up to a not insignificant number, I guess. And so.
Well, the additional six hundred thousand dollars, not insignificant either. Or this contributed to. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, for sure. But it's the same. It's, and yeah, sure, it's 600. So they're going to go through.
Yeah, I just wanted, is this doing core tracking? And is, is it doing, as they deliver their fish, it's, you're got, the IPHC is doing the math of what their allocations are reduced and that kind of stuff? Or is it just collecting data? Or is it doing some of the management aspect of it as well?
No, it's just the collection of the data, the data basing, quality control, provision.
Yeah, because like in Canada, we pay a third party to do this. Like this is, I pay 1,500 bucks, two, three grand a trip. They're doing exactly that. It's all mixed. We have an integrated fisheries. The onus is on a specific vessel, bringing in the time it takes. So.
Well, in effect, that's what this would be. It's fees that are collected from the industry.
Aside from if there's a depth.
If there's depth. And that's where I absolutely agree. This is an issue we need to clear up here to make sure that the secretary isn't committing to do more work than there is.
So maybe just to assist purely with that, that component. And so, for the last 10 days or so, I've been putting together, going through the files to figure out exactly what has happened in the past. And so on screen is the direct sablefish budget contributions that have been provided by the US, and these are reported out in our financial statements and border reports. Going back to the start of the IFQ, which was 90 something or other, and so I just cut it at 2001 because that's, it came in at $7,000. 2005, there's a missing file and I wasn't able to find it, but there is a jump from 2006 up to around $35,000 that was provided annually from NIPS specifically to undertake the sablefish logbooks. And this was through a contractual arrangement, not through a grant. And so each year, NIPS was providing the grants that we're talking about, the sampling grants shown on the bottom of the screen here. So 420,000, 421,000 in FY 2025, for example, and up to 76, 77,000 dollars separate specifically for a sablefish. In 2016, at some point, there was a change in the way that worked. And the budgeted amount for 2017 of just over $80,000 was written down as being deferred until FY 2018. And so you can see that while it was budgeted for 80,000 in 2017, nothing was received. And so at that point, there was a transition where the amount paid for the sablefish logs was meant to be rolled into the sampling grant. So you would expect to see the sampling grant increase at that point by approximately 75 to 80,000 dollars. This gray line is that same chart, just on a different scale. And so you can see the 2016, this is the amount that was received and not received in 2017. And this is the NIPS grant at that point up until 2017. So at this point, for 2018, we would have expected to see essentially an additional 80,000 dollars being added to undertake that sablefish work. However, what you can see is the blue line, which is the combined actually received, actually went down that next year and has been maintained at that lower level since, including in 2022 where it dropped below 400,000. And so the concern that I think is being recognized is that there was an agreement to include payments for sablefish in the grant. What we saw was actually a reduced grant even further than the 2016, 17 levels. And as a function of that, the other contracting party contribution reserve was being utilized to pay those expenses. And you can see the green line there is our current estimate of the entire program eligible expenses for the program. Like, and I'll just highlight that again, that that's the eligible, the expenses that we expect over that five-year period that meet the grant criteria. Doesn't mean that that's what we're going to get. It's mean we've reviewed the grant criteria. These are the post IFQ eligible expenses scaled to pre IFQ.
So, can I? So, David, did I understand that right? By the way, I should mention I'm getting some comments that not everybody can hear clearly.
Okay.
I think in particular Paul and John. So I don't know if we need to move the mic or whatever.
I think we just need to raise, raise voices.
So you, you mentioned, you know, forecasting based on what is eligible. I just, I think what we, if we leave aside the question that Paul has raised for a moment about whether the secretary should be doing this work, and we just asked the question of ensuring costs are fully covered. Am I to understand that what you're describing in terms of that green forecast, that is your full accounting of the costs you anticipate needing to be covered to undertake the work being asked of the secretary?
Through the chair, correct. In short, correct. And that values, those are the approximately 81% of the total funds that we would spend in Alaska. And so that's scaled because the grant is written in such a way that the proportion of expenses pre IFQ are the IPHC's component. And the, the change in that proportion, which is about, it's roughly 80, 81%, are eligible for cost recovery through the grant.
So that's just something that was determined at the time the IFQ program, and in effect, it's carried forward as the relevant for the data.
And so if I was to give you maybe another comparison that might help with that thinking, if we look at last year's budget, FY 2022, we budgeted through the grant for $508,000 eligible expenses, and that wasn't all the expenses that could have been eligible. We received 352, so there was a shortfall there of about 150 odd thousand dollars. The entire sampling program costs us around 1.8 million dollars, and that includes Washington and Canada. So that's 30 statistics within Fund 30. And this is just the component for Alaska and just the components that are eligible under the terms of the grant.
Oh, that did, but earlier you had said that the grant, the amount you would apply for is roughly a third of the port samples.
Of the entire program, I think I've been, the proportion's slightly wrong. So it's about half. Yeah. So it's, last year it was 1.8 million, and so we're looking at roughly 900,000 for next year. This is last year's numbers. 1.8 million for the whole port sampling per person, coast line.
If this is concursing budgeted and actually received, is there a time for actual expenses? Do you go back and see what you budgeted this amount, or is it actual expenses compared to what you receive?
So that gets harder, absolutely. And we've been through a internal say, revolution of our finance and accounting systems. And one of the reasons that we're able to give you more precise numbers now is that we are, have transitioned into full fund accounting, which means that we are, we have Fund 10, 20, and 30, which is statistics. Within Fund 30, within our new accounting system, we're able to tag specifically eligible expenses for the grant. And then also the proportion is able to be split out by 19% by BHC, 81% grant eligible. We then submit those numbers to the granters who provide us a proportion of that, which is, should be the full amount if the money's available. And if the money's not available, it's been a lower amount. So the green line here for the first time represents what we actually expect to spend that's eligible for cost recovery.
Are you eligible, are are costs associated with tracking your time and writing the grant and managing this an eligible expense?
So, through the chair, it has become that way. This is part of the last fund accounting components. We have submitted it. It's up to 10% is eligible. That doesn't cover the full administrative costs of administering the grant, but NOAA has a cap of 10% for other hits for one of that description.
Okay, so if I follow that, the green line does not in fact actually cover all of the costs associated with what it takes to both write this, implement this, track your time on this, and report out.
It includes up to 10% and other grants we might include up to 20% of our time. So there would be an element there that is not being included.
Do you have any idea the amount of time that is kind of taken by what we would call a dockside observer? Do you know kind of how much time they're taking over the course of the season?
We do. And so we've been tracking that in detail over the last couple of years, specifically as we've moved into this fund accounting scenario. And so on the screen, you will see the projected core costs for the sablefish elements. And if you look down the bottom, you have FY 2023. So we have the estimate for staff time in the field was 1,100 hours afforded for sablefish and headquarters time for 265 hours. And this is just for the fisheries data specialists. This is not including other administrative tasks and administrative staff in my time, for example, or first time. That should increase. And so that was the estimate for 2023. However, the sablefish quota, I think, has gone up by 25%. And that's a secondhand piece of information. So maybe someone more informed can advise. But those numbers would increase as a result of that because if you have more quota, you have more time sampling, more logbooks collected, more data entered, more time you see.
And that's just specifically for sablefish?
This is our estimate for sablefish. I'm sorry, through the chair.
Yeah, because I have my, what we pay our dockside observer. We pay 131 bucks an hour. Plus an extra, we do tagging, an extra $102 an hour to have to take. So can we hire you?
So is it, it goes back to the halibut. Is it? Make sure I frame my question here. Should, should we necessarily expect the cost recovery funds to cover 100% of this, you know, given that it's for halibut, it's core to the commission's mission? Certainly a source of revenue, but does it need to be
Thanks, through the chat. Thank you for the question. And that's something that we approached NOAA the last couple of years for commentary on whether the funds could just be provided direct from State Department, Department of Commerce as part of our annual contributions. In principle, you could zero out that income from the grant. And the funds would need to come from contracting party contributions if you wanted to maintain the program. So the short answer is no, it does not have to come from or from the grant. It could come from the contracting party from the US directly. And while that is a much simpler way of doing it, I understand the US's preference of doing it through the grant because it's another pot of money that can be used to offset those expenses. But if you, if you see the FY 2024 proposed budget with that income of 900 odd thousand dollars, in theory, that should be, could be zeroed out, and the contributions would simply come from contracts.
I understand that there are reasons, accounting reasons why. I guess what I'm wondering about is if the grant can focus on the sablefish portion, whatever additional recovery funds are. Some fraction. Just the regular US contribution.
David, on the previous slide, costs seem to be going up about 35, 37% over the four-year period. What's driving that? Is it just using a cost estimate 7%? For last year or something like that?
Correct. And I'll just put very, highlight again, this is very much a draft estimate that we've been trying to put together to determine what it would actually look like for sablefish alone. And so this is an, a 25% increase per year. But noting, of course, that we are looking at a 25% increase in quota would mean that some of the personnel costs would increase by potentially up to 25%, but the others would not necessarily increase. You're not traveling anymore. You're not buying more equipment to want to take that.
Does it include biological sample?
There is this is a collection of tags, for example, if there are tags, sablefish, and collecting some of the biological information associated with that tagged fish, those kinds. Maybe this is food for thought. We do have that. There's another general amount of other business to come back to. You're content at the moment to sit with that. We can move on to somebody else. All right, secretary, could I have you just shoot back to wherever we were? I think it was slide 14 or 15. And the final, well, it's not quite the final, another source of income are typically the MOU. We have the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, and this is an example of another species that we do work for, for Washington in this case, to undertake eight additional survey stations off the coast of Washington. Noting that we have the platform already at sea. We include it as part of the contract for whichever vessel fishes that area. And Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife reimburses us in full for those expenses, and you can see them broken down there in the table. And that's also available at the website. If you were to click this link, it'll take you directly to that MOU, which is provided on our website. So that's 100% cost recovered. The rockfish sampling that we do as part of the, this platform. In the FY 2024 budget, we have not included or currently not included any research grants, as we haven't yet secured those. But typically, this is another source of income, income where the Biological and Ecosystem Sciences Branch applies for and receives funding to undertake specific research projects. A couple of projects we have underway this year, and they're running from last year as well, are the BREP Grant, which is looking at gear-based approaches to catch protection. And that was just under $100,000. And also the NPRB Award for Population Genetics, and that was split over a number of years. And has also been incorporated into the 2023 budget, if you were to look back the version that you adopted previously. These are, expenses are accrued monthly, and the value of those grants is very much dependent on the research activities that are outlined in the five-year previously Biological and Ecosystem Science Plan, and now the Integrated Research and Monitoring Program. As I said, for 2024, we haven't secured any, and so we haven't budgeted for, in the proposed budget, they'll be added should they be successful.
We anticipate seeking those grants going forward.
We have, yes, through the chair, we have a number that we have applied for. And as soon as they are awarded, obviously they get published on the website, but then they also become part of the annual budgeting records.
And they're generally fully funded. Some of these research projects would be fully funded through the grant or?
Through the chair, some are fully funded, 100% externally funded, others requiring contributions. And so staff time we will allocate for a particular research project if it's contained within the activities of the commission that are outlined in the research plan.
Just on research, appreciate all the work that Sepp's gone to provide. Research, but would like to propose, I will propose that to be a modification of Sepp's providing, besides just a verbal update. It'd be helpful, I think, to have a tool that tracks the research objects, not just through the grants, but the research projects. Provides an overview. Gives the funding details and commissioners' decisions are at each of those. So it's a much higher level. It's a synopsis of what's going on with research then. Sepp's providing this, where he gets the details. Like to see something that's a little more higher. Gives us a timeframe when we expect to see deliverables. Gives us a status where things are at the time. I can share this with you. I guess, John, I'm thinking that there's some details that are missing in Sepp's that I think would be helpful for us as commissioners to understand where things are going and how they're going. Are we running into problems? Have we provided clear direction to the commission? Well, what we as commissioners would like to see, is that modified?
Thinking of commiserate and priorities to some extent?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, you know, in a kind of simple scheme, one, two, three. Give an overview of what the theme of it is. Give an abstract. You've talked about what we'd like to see in mine.
I gather you have a listing of that. For Dave's benefit.
And then establish.
I think that's, sorry, through the chair, very durable. And it would look initially something similar to what we do with actions arising or the performance review style of updates. We're listing timeframes, deliverables, status, funding, and if there was a clear decision or recommendation. The next request was around details around external funding. So specifically the implications of past shortfalls and the like. I think we've had a pretty robust discussion so far around the NOAA grant. Just gonna click to refresh my memory to see if there's anything we haven't already discussed that we're not going to cover in business. Oh, yeah. So on the IPAC website, provided as part of this slide and also within the paper itself, there's a link to our cooperation with other organizations for IPAC website. And so you can actually go back and look in time at all of the MOUs, the letter of the research projects that have been undertaken. We're doing a bit of an audit of that at the moment to see if there are some even earlier grants and the like that we can dig out and put on the website. Could also give you an idea of what's been done in the past and how we collaborate with other organizations. Currently, that's as part of our, as I mentioned, our five-year program of integrated research and monitoring. In terms of external funding shortfalls, we've talked a little bit about Grant 802 and how where there has been a shortfall in the cost recovery grant funds provided, we have either taken two steps. One, to reduce the services. So for example, not filling the port of Juneau in 2021 or 2022. And then also simply making cost savings elsewhere in the budget, whether it be through travel on other areas or administration and using those cost saved funds to fund the port over. In terms of mitigation measures moving forward, as I just mentioned, for the research programs from Sepp's branch, we no longer include income sources for grants until they are secured. Over the last number of years, we have provided them that those have been applied for. Because obviously that causes some issues if there's a delay in the grant being issued by three or four months. So we just don't provide that as part of the budget projection anymore until the money's been provided. The Grant 802, again, I think we've covered most of these components. There's going to be more discussion around how to handle funding shortfalls and say sablefish sampling activities. But we would seek a commission decision on how we would split the staff time between sablefish and halibut if there needs to be a reduction. And so I think that's going to be a bit more of a broader detailed discussion.
So Dave, I have a semantic distinction here in not including grants in the budget except for 802.
So through the chair, 802 has been communicated to us that it's different to a grant. And even though it's within the NOAA grants program, it's simply because that's the only way that the funds can be provided to us. And so there is, has been, maybe there still is an assumption that it's a more secured source of funding for post-IQ activities within Alaskan waters. Whereas typically, research grants are project focused, short term. They come and go. You may or may not get them. And it often depends on implied contributions being secured from other grant sources. So that's it in short. One category of true grants and the other one is more a pseudo contracting party contribution through the cost recovery grants program.
I don't know if you rehearsed that, but that came across well. So the amount, though, I don't think we can take for granted, particularly since there's a pretty substantial increase over has been and it continued, what do you say, 7% increase going forward? So it does seem like there's some uncertainty there that we should take into account in the budget.
Through the chair, and that's one of the reasons why I've certainly felt it important to get this in front of the commission. Because there is this potential for increased costs for the port program not being covered either through the grant or through contracting party contributions, which means that we need to find the funds through either the reserve, which is pretty slim these days. Or supplementary contracting party contributions.
Or scale network.
Or scale backdoor.
Are these port people living in the ports that you have, or are they having their hotel space for three months or what? What are our expenses are?
Yeah, through the chair, they vary from port to port. We have, I think, four live-in port samples and the remainder, forgive me those who are listening at this vibe, but there's the rest we bring in from around the US. And with the exception of Dutch Hager, they just find their own accommodation and pay for their own as part of their cell.
Has there been in recent history, any effort audit might be the wrong term, but to take a hard look at the port sampling program and see if there are cost efficiencies there. Is to reduce expenses.
Thank you. Through the chair, two components of that. One is that we undertook that by necessity as part of the grant shortfall in 2022, 2021, and it was, we worked with our quantitative scientists to determine that we could contain the necessary biological samples, odalas and the like, and also logbook samples by not sampling in Juneau for the year. There are things that you naturally miss associated with that kind of reduction. But it is a possibility to continue our biological sampling needs by a reduction in our field footprint. Just increase the sampling rates in other neighboring ports. And logbooks sooner or later, you come in contact either with the vessels in other ports or through magnets.
So for example, is there a way to structure it on a rotational basis? So we might do it every two years, every three years and just cycle it?
The short answer is yes, that is an option that we've been looking at as well. We are also looking at for FY 2023, noting the grant shortfall. Again, I think it was like $45,000 for FY 2023, we have shortened the contractual length of sampling in each of the ports now finishing, I think it's like the 22nd of November instead of going through to the end of the season. And so the loss of data for that period was considered relatively minor in comparison to the cost saving, the gain that could be made. So the short answer is yes, there are things that we can do to reduce our field footprint for cost saving purposes without reducing the data quality or the amount of data to a great extent.
Have you been able to document that?
It's a work in progress.
Think that'd be really useful for us to take a look.
And so we've documented it for Juneau or when we did the sample.
I understand that. That correction is that was kind of a last minute scramble decision.
It was.
It was related to the execency of the circumstances, but I'm thinking more broadly for planning going forward. This is an expensive program on where costs are escalating. If there is kind of a disciplined, forward-looking way, we can look at that to see what some options might be.
I think if that's a general agreement, we could include that as one of the recommendations from the special session that we undertake that kind of analysis in a more structured way and look at, look at it from the perspective of our biological sampling needs versus the logbook collection verification needs as well. So there's a couple of components that would need to be considered. We've done that in the past. And so it's something simply.
John, I think I can get your question up to what it was asking. Slide here, number two, where it says granting to, it indicated to us that the grant is not a grant, but a subsidy. Annual contracting party contributions USA. I just like to understand what that subsidy, is that word?
I think that's a question for Dave. That's not my word.
Back to say, my mind. Through the chair, it's a subsidy in my mind because if the grant didn't exist, we would still need to undertake those activities to collect logbooks for Pacific Halibut, to collect the necessary biological samples. And that would need to be covered through some format, whether it be directly through US contributions or combined contributions. And so by default, I'm using the word subsidy because it's not covering the entire amount of that program, as you can see with the projection for the next five years going over a billion dollars. And the amount that's being provided is usually less than 400,000, 500,000. So it's only pushing of it. And the rest is being picked up through contracting party contributions.
Seems to me this is a core function of the mission. This information for how? Yes, we need to be careful about the sablefish portion of that. And I can understand Canada not wanting to cover that. That's something that can be covered through the cost recovery program. It's just, this doesn't strike me as discretionary work.
Yeah, the halibut portion. That is the right way. The cost are 953,000 for halibut. That funding would seem to be would not come from party control for Canada. No, I don't know why none of it would.
I think it's on this point. I think we need to be clear about the different questions or issues that work to sablefish, not the commission's work, right? So that's its own discussion. But even in the context of the halibut data collection, I think I would like to ensure we have a conversation about how that work is funded. We may agree that it is core to the commission and the secretary's work. I don't think that automatically leads us to the conclusion that it comes from party contributions in that on the Canadian side, I think, as Peter was alluding to earlier, a lot of this same work is covered out of industry payment to a service provider. There's some sort of quasi-equivalent process through the provision of this grant, which is derived from a 3% levy on fishery license holders. That just sort of like serve the same purpose, right? To fund the work. So I do think we want to be careful between, yes, it's important. But distinguishing that from how should it be paid for? Because there, we could find ourselves in a situation where one party is covering the costs of that out of industry's contributions and the other party may not be or may only be covering a part of it. And so I think we want to be looking for an equitable or fair way that those costs are covered for each party and their associated fisheries. So agree, it's important, but the funding question, I think, is still at issue at this.
So the collection of this data, the logbook and then biological data, some sort of samples to maybe determine sexing and aging of the fish. But in terms of the logbook stuff in the Pacific House, for instance, they make a delivery now. You take a picture of your logbook and you send it into Pacific States. And is that really an item of work? We need to have our port samplers doing it. Should we get more into the dot com era for transmitting this information back to them?
Through the chairs, the most direct component response would be the answer will be through electronic logs. Be the simplest way. And then I think, as you just pointed out, there are steps moving back to it. Where you could just take photographs. There are advantages of having that in person. You have a verification process. You have clarification there and then. But then, as you said, we have a sampling program where we are taking various sampling rates in port. Those staff are dissecting and removing odalas, taking tissue samples for other purposes. Collect data and then feed into the stock assessment. So then there's, and that's why earlier when the chair asked to do an analysis, it's really a couple of elements. One is purely logbooks, but then is the other biological sampling that we do export. We can certainly adjust those rates in different areas and whether it's sampling every year, every three years in different ports or increasing rates in one port next to another port sample, there are a range of options, but short response is yes, I think over time we're moving towards make things more efficient through electronic logbooks or. I think there's still a lot to cover. Can I move on?
Maybe just summarize some for me, if you might. I'd have heard earlier that 1.8 million dollars for close by port sampling. 50% of that was for sampling species other than halibut.
No, sorry. So in 2023, for example, we, about 1.8 million dollars was spent on the coast wide sampling program. If we were to split that between Alaska and other areas, and these are very rough numbers. We submitted about $780,000 request to the grant last year. I think we received 400 and something as an example. So that's for sablefish and halibut combined. And the rest is all halibut.
Dave, is there a way to get at some of the incremental costs of the sablefish data collection? Up and beyond that.
Through the chair. So you mean in the field, the field component?
Yep.
There there potentially is. The logbook components where the data is combined, you know? The experience and I experienced it myself when I when I went to show business last year in in the week that I was in port, the samplers only ever went to vessels landing sablefish. And so there is a component where we could simply not visit those vessels and you could actually separate it out. And it's becoming more prevalent, particularly this year, it's the sablefish quota increase. But last year it was very noticeable where a lot of vessels were simply targeting sablefish and not halibut. And so those vessels coming in through the RAM system, you can see what's being landed. They're estimating landed of halibut versus sablefish. And there could be a decision point there about, well, we're not going to go to that vessel because we know it's only sablefish. So there could be some elements that could be separated out, but not when it's a combined land.
It's it sounds like your answer was more focused on sort of the operational aspects in the field. I guess I'm trying to think of it from a budgeting standpoint to help commissioners better understand sort of the baseline of halibut data collection, sampling program, and then the added cost of layering sablefish and stuff.
Thank you. I understand the question a bit better now. And so that's also why the grant has been currently drafted. The way it's written is that we're paying for that staff member import in any case to sample and undertake halibut work. So they're in port, they are there undertaking halibut, Pacific halibut work as their primary tasking, and then the sablefish as a secondary tasking. If they weren't undertaking the sablefish work, they would still be in port, still be paying the salary, and they would be doing additional Pacific halibut work applied to them from headquarters. And so we do send material from headquarters to those staff during quiet periods where there are no landings of anything on. So they would be working on halibut. And that's why that 900,000 is for their full salary import.
This is more of a technical question that I'm not sure. So I do electronic logbook. And I submit it to IPHC. And is that minimum? Like now you don't have to do data entry? Are you? Do you guys? Does that automatically get put into some sort of spreadsheet? And so you removes this like Bob was talking about.
Thanks for the question. You're going slightly beyond my level of technical expertise. The team is in the office today, so I will grab them maybe soon as we adjourn and pull them in and have we can have a bit more discussion about exactly what happens with those logbooks.
Okay, sure.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. So the the next dot point is still as as part of for inquiry number one was the number of staff and the amount of staff time required to develop and administer those contracts. And again, we've already covered some of this. It is difficult to precisely calculate some of the administrative support. As I mentioned, we do try and have a 20% overhead cost applied to our research grants. Then NOAA grant only allows us 10%. As part of that table, there, part of the paper, there is a table with some components broken out for hours that we spend on different tasks. And I've also just highlighted the number of hours that our field samplers and our headquarters fishery data specialists spend on sablefish, for example. So we we do track that that level of detail. There are other elements, other activities, such as the work we do with for NOAA as part of the Fishery Independent Setline Survey on cod and dogfish, of which we haven't passed out to any great detail, but it's something that we put in if that was needed. But again, because that's part of the Fishery Independent Setline Survey and not part of the core contributions, we have gone into detail at this point on those two. The second major question from contracting parties was around any significant changes in budget lines over the last five years. And there were two core elements there. One was generic and the other one was very specific.
Sorry to take you back. Can you go back one side? So cod and dogfish, something separate than this grant we've been talking about at length. Sorry, say the cod and dogfish work. Is that something outside this grant?
Correct. It's outside the grant.
Okay, so how are those costs being covered? I mean, that's that's not a halibut.
So through through the chair, this is one of the in kind scenarios that we we undertake for for NOAA, where we have the platform available. The fish are being ported, being landed, and we are collecting the information as part of the the work that's ongoing as part of Fishery Independent Setline Survey, noting that NOAA does some of that work for us on, for example, the troll survey. And so this is one of those areas which is a clear in kind contribution that we're providing as sort of goodwill and as collaborative leachit. So the first budget line that has changed substantially over the last five years is salaries and wages. And I think that was highlighted earlier as well. And so you can see, put together a table which reflects the actuals for those last five fiscal years, four last four fiscal years and 2024. A few little simplistic indicators of whether that's gone up and down. And over the period from 2020 to 2024, it's been roughly an 11% increase over that five year period, which equates to a 2.71% increase year on year. And as a comparison, noting that we are in general agreement with the US federal civil service salary. Over that same period, the US federal government salaries have gone up on average 3.19%. So we're slightly below that that is over the five year period. I think as part of the paper, I've highlighted some of the reasons why there has been dips and increases at certain times. Those have included holding positions vacant. So I don't know if that's on the next slide or not. So forgive me if I jump back. Yes, it is. So in FY 2022, we ran with an additional hire. So we had 34 FTEs, as this was why we were transitioning out as team member and ensuring we had continuity as part of our business continuity plan. I've provided a couple of other examples of of why those decreases or increases have occurred. And I'll pause there to see if there's any questions
So I would assume that benefits follow roughly the same curve or are these like, have you incorporated benefits into that?
Yeah, that's actually the next slide. And the answer in theory should be yes, but it hasn't because we were we've undergone a overhaul of our benefits that we've been providing to to staff over the last five years or so. And and that resulted in some increases in certain areas and decreases in other areas. And so it doesn't track it, you know, in our set, yeah, our pace, in a real world, it could. Real world, that's not the right word. Sorry, go on.
Last bullet there, it says, call that in accordance with US federal
So and that is related to the previous slide where I was highlighting the Seattle Tacoma US federal civil service guidelines versus what we've actually put, it's been sliding this. So over that period, we've implemented 2.71% per year, whereas the US federal civil service was 3%. And that relates to the budgeting scenario versus the in year decision that the US president makes for cost of living and US and and you're going to be able to articulate this better than I am, John or David, but which is made in January. So it's within the fiscal year. So there's a bit of bit of estimation on our part versus what may or may not be approved.
You've made a decision, but the actual number is somewhere.
So there's going to be variance there on any given. But the good thing is that, as you can see, over a five year period, it's very similar, which is the intent of the procedure. So moving on to the benefits, which is obviously it's still linked to to salaries and wages. But as you can see, over the period 2020 to 2024, we went through a period of reduced overall benefits. And we're proposing the increase associated with 2024. Number of reasons why there has been this this change, and they're available on the next slide. In FY 2021, was the first year that the commission froze the budget. And so as a cautionary measure, we didn't fill some vacancies or rejected vacancies. And hence, there was a decrease in the estimated benefits budgeted. In FY 2022, we made a number of substantial benefit changes, including managing retiree benefits. I'm going to use the word appropriately, and offering less medical insurance options for staff, including capping healthcare reimbursement accounts, which were previously uncapped. And so with that combination, you saw a decrease in the amount of benefits value or the benefits to be budgeted for. In 2023, we saw again a decrease from the prior from the previous year. And this was, and we're going to talk about this in a little bit, due to some of the restructuring we did within the organization, where we pushed some of the roles and responsibilities downward within the organization. So instead of having six managerial staff, we reduced five. And obviously, that results in lower benefits needing to be to be paid as well. And in 2024, we have budgeted for a full complement of 33 FTEs and an assumption of a 12% increase in medical insurance premiums, which may or may not eventually. So that's lower, I guess. And I'll quickly flick back to that graph before I move on. Any questions on on benefits? Subsidiary body reps was the next core point that was requested for a clarification. And so our 2024 budget line covers travel for non-government members to attend the respective board meetings, the research advisory board. We have eight to 10 board members, one person, one in person meeting annually for one day, the SRB. There's two in person meetings for three days. And the MSAB, we budgeted for one in person meeting for three days. And again, we've we highlighted the number of reps there. All of these board meetings are held in the IPHC headquarters office. So there's no facilities charge associated with these. And so it's really about travel for DMs and for the SRB members as independent board members. They receive an honorarium for their services branded $600 per day. Individually. We have budgeted $81,000 total for subsidiary body reps in 2024. Yes, I do have a graph as well. So you can see that the change, this is one that's changed significantly over five year period. In 2020, the amount budgeted was 114. So essentially, that's pre COVID levels. And FY 21, 22, we reduced that to simply the honorariums for the SRB. And then in 2023, we increased it. What the additional component was, all the RAB met in person for the first time in three years. And so that cost us, we estimated about $10,000. And then in 2024, it's back to that full complement of meetings with only but only one MSAB meeting in person. So you can see that prior to COVID, so pre COVID, to the 2024, we're still looking at a 7% decrease over that five year period, a straight line.
Yeah, just on the honorariums, at $600 a day and 81,000, that's all. The science review board putting in that much, that's like 30 days a year for each of them.
So for clarity, that 81,000 is for all subsidiary body travel.
Oh, travel. Okay.
So everything combined. So if you look over in the right hand column here, 81,000 is for the MSAB, SRB, and the RAB. And the honorarium is included as part of this $33,000.
Okay.
Sorry. And this is increasing for by 2024 because we have plans to hire a full SRB member, which was discussed in the accounting fees. As you recall, we have been transitioning. We are now, say, fully transitioned to our external accountants, some of the line associates, and they provide our accounting services. We have a staff administrative specialist on accounting who does that direct liaison liaison with our accounting firm. But otherwise, some of the bill and associates undertakes our tax reporting purposes, our entry into Applos, our accounting software, and then also is our key linkage with the annual. They their fees have obviously increased as we've transitioned to being almost fully reliant on them as our accounts provider. And that has been now capped at $150,000 annually as part of our So that's new from about 2022. They started to work for us in 2021 under contract and are now under a full agreement. So $150,000 annually is what we pay. And and I should also highlight that that is still less than one staff accountant with all benefits. So it's still cost saving. Travel is the next line that has changed quite dramatically over the years, particularly pre COVID, where we were budgeting 197, so just under $200,000 annually for travel. FY 2021, we're a little optimistic that COVID wouldn't last that long. And so we we kept it kept it flat. And then subsequently in '22, we reduced it down to the top means. In FY 2023, it increased up to 188,000. But the previous commission meeting, it was requested that we, I think that was in 2022, and we're in an average to try and reduce overall staff travel as much as possible. So you'll see that reflected. And it's a proposal for 142 in FY 2024. Again, something has been highly impacted by by COVID. So the most useful numbers are the pre COVID number FY 20 budget versus the current.
So for fiscal year 2023, roughly 190,000. Is that back to in person meetings?
That through the chair, that's back to in person meetings with one MSA. We only budgeted for the one MSA.
So just for clarity, then, is there some between what we're seeing characterized as travel with costs that were being captured earlier in the slide on subsidiary bodies? And potentially with the slide that's to come on IPHC meetings, like are these separate or overlap?
Correct. So thank you for the question. And it does need clarification. And so one thing that we also encountered as part of the 2022 annual meeting discussion around budgets at the Finance Administration Committee was a request to reduce the amount of travel, the travel budget below a level that we would have been able to service the meetings. And so as part of fund accounting, and we made some modifications, and it's in the paper documented, that we have moved staff travel in support of IPHC meetings, so essentially annual meeting, to the IPHC meetings component that is on That is on the next slide, which is, you can see here, is reflected in in the increase that's being provided. And I think that was around $40,000 in the paper off the top of my head. Maybe you can have to remember that better than I can. And so you will see that now being reflected solely as IPHC meetings. So that's meetings of the subsidiary bodies and the Commission only is in this new budget line. And so that's why you see an increase, two reasons. You see an increase in IPHC meetings in FY 20 of 154,000 to FY 2024, which is essentially $90,000 more, roughly $40,000. That is the IPHC staff trouble that's been moved into that account line. And the other 50-odd thousand is simply due to increased meeting costs.
Yeah, if I follow you there.
Yeah.
So slide 37, you've got a decrease from '23 to '24 of like 46. Following that approximately 40 of that is due to moving where we're accounting for costs from travel on slide 37 to IPHC meetings?
Most of it, yes. The cost of travel has also increased by about 25% from 2020 to 2024. That's just built in. So the cost of one ticket, for example, on a given airline is now substantially more than 2020. So while roughly $40,000 has been added to the IPHC meetings travel budget, doesn't equate to the same $40,000 in 2020. So it's reduced travel, but with higher costs of that travel.
It related to this. I recall talking about meetings and secretary travel expenses and for instance, having the work meeting here. So you don't need to send all the staff ship the events and everything. So is that built in here?
Correct, it is. And so in this budget for 2024, we have replicated last year's meeting schedule. So work meeting and interim meeting in a small format in Bellingham as an example. And so the cost saving would be around, maybe I'll pull them out rather than giving them around. I would imagine it would be probably 10 to 15.
It would be less if it were in this building, right?
Correct.
I thought we had decided to go ahead and proceed that way.
Been discussed, but it hadn't been decided.
Okay. It seems like a prudent cost-saving measure. So it's have to be, but.
If it's from memory, I think the work meeting was around $14,000. I think I communicated that. None of you may remember that email chain, but it's around 14,000. Say again?
14,000 to have it filmed.
All right, let me pull those numbers out so that I can give you a.
I guess particularly what I'm trying to get at is the marginal cost difference, having it here versus having it in Bellingham. If it's here, yeah, there are some expenses. Is there a question in the interim meeting too? Some efficiencies to be had.
The Commission has discussed in the past about a couple of options there. It's one, opposite of full meeting, which we used to have in Seattle. So I think it was around $3,000 at a hotel in public versus the Bellingham option last year, again, around the same, $14,000 versus not having it at all and just having it as a virtual meeting. It really is about updating yourselves, stakeholders from the work meeting to the interim meeting before the annual meeting. Or as you said, those are your options, I can.
And will have any thoughts on that?
It's worth exploring. Exciting what the pros and cons might be. Seems like something we can try to resolve while we're here.
The Bellingham option as opposed to having the highest downtown was reasonable. Yeah, I guess it sort of begs the question, well, why do it in Bellingham when there's office space here? One was 41, 14,000. Whether it's here or in Bellingham, good question. The interim meeting, we gathered in person, but stakeholders were all virtual participants. I expected to hear some pushback on that, but did not.
The pushback I heard was that they were happy to.
Happy to not attend.
People happy to do it online, have the option to do that.
Yeah. Seems like the plus is for us, it being able to get together face to face, but less of a production. Yeah, for the interim meeting, really makes sense. Does save some money. I think people are getting more used to remote meetings and finding their convenience for a number of things. And if we're not really hearing pushback on it, then. Why not? I guess on the the work meeting, we've been having them in Bellingham for, I think, for a couple of reasons. One, it was convenient for both Canada and the US. And so it would save some money, but then are we going to then rotate between here and Canada? Well, and that means secretariat staff needing to. So I guess that's the trick. A little bit more of an expense in Bellingham, but less travel obligation for.
And so I've just looked into the accounts, and so we budgeted $13,500 for each of those meetings. What you have one here would probably remove most of that. Which means, so for work meeting and or interim meeting at Hotel Bel Air, whether we're trying to pay $13,500, is what's included in the budget.
Correct.
Just in terms of Bellingham versus here, I like the idea of not having to move staff. But also, it was pretty tight even in Bellingham. And I don't know with all the advisors and everybody, is this going to be suitable? Like, can you get, can you envision having everyone in here? I mean, there's a lot of other fold.
Yeah, so through the chairs, we'd have it in the training room, and that's a room that's bigger than.
Oh, it's bigger, okay.
I mean, my my own personal thought is I the, I like the idea of having one of the two where the commissioners at least would be together. Work being is seems like a good opportunity to sort of catch up, talk in a bit more of an informal setting to scope what's coming and you highlight any issues that we might need to be preparing for. So I see some value in being in person for that. Interim meeting, as you say, Dave, is largely about sort of sharing information. And so, you know, if we were to look for places to save costs, to me, that might be the candidate where we could at least consider whether we want to be in person as commissioners or virtual will suffice. Perhaps that will be a year-by-year thing, like if there's some things we really want some time to deal with in person, maybe to sort of leave that option available to us. But that would be my thought about further cutting costs between those two meetings.
So if we had the
not want to go virtual. Because I'm hearing some interest in having one in Bellingham and one here.
Just in terms for Dave, like, one thing I have noticed is that the staff seem to, it's almost like a bonding exercise, I think, for everybody there. When you have one in in Bellingham, and I just was curious if that, is that strategic to have everyone get together that? You know, where it's a little less pressure than the annual meeting as well?
Yeah, through the chair, I would agree. Having having the key advisors from the Secretariat for the Commission at that meeting really does does help because it's particularly for the work meeting setting because it's informal. And it really is the first time that we've had the opportunity to catch up with the commissioners and provide updates on all of the projects in an informal setting. And so if I was to make a suggestion, it would be to have the maintain a work meeting in person. You can get a lot out of that, and the staff get a lot out of that as well. And then noting that the interim meeting is essentially just a small update from what you've already heard at the work meeting. If you were to sacrifice an in-person and have it fully virtual, that would make the most sense. Noting stakeholders, sounds like you're really making that decision to keep stakeholders remote for that meeting. The third option, if I was to suggest.
Thanks.
Prepared to bring this to closure and give some guidance to Dave?
On the meeting?
Yeah.
Like what Peter described.
Virtual for the interim meeting, in-person in Bellingham for the work meeting. Staff at the work.
But that'll be a budget reduction of 13,000. The next question surrounded headquarters, another facility rentals. And again, we've gone over some of these, so I will not spend too much time. We've talked about seven-day lease itself, particularly surrounding where we are. The associated costs for that lease and maintenance having increased over the period from 2013 to what's included, just over 500,000 for 2024. Don't need to spend too much time on that other than acknowledging that there will need to be a discussion around premises moving forward and lease renewal. Maybe that's something that happened subsequently to this meeting.
Well, on that, would you be carrying someone to campus around?
Through the chair, yes. And so each time we have a external firm that we that we hire, and their fees are credited or paid for by the successful landlord. So there's no costs associated with that. It's like investment managers where they they take their profits from from the other person. Sell a house, the sale costs paid for by the person selling the property, doing property in this case. The other facility we have in Seattle is what we call the MIC or the Maritime Industrial Center. And so this is a facility we rent just down the road. And it's a warehouse, and it's where we store all of our field equipment for the Fishery Independent Setline Survey. In years gone past, those fees were paid for by contracting priority contributions to a certain degree. But they are now fully paid for by the Fishery Independent Setline Survey. So are not incorporated within the budget. They are within the 40 component of the budget and it's one of them. And this is where we store all of our fish shacks, things we put on the boat for the samples, sit and measure fish and store items. Some depredation gear in there at the moment, pods, and other heavy equipment stored down there. And it's about 500 meters that way down the road.
So you got to tranship all this stuff back and forth every between? Is there an idea of keeping it like some of the lots there, or storage maybe cheaper? Or do you have to do work on them over there?
Through through the chairs, it's the latter component that's key. A lot of it goes through significant maintenance. So all of our water profilers, for example, have to undergo annual maintenance. The shacks are repaired, the scales and things like that are repaired and and the shipping for that, by the way, is paid for by this directly. So it's not by contracting. The office space in Homer is a bit of an outlier now. So we have and continue to pay for a single office space of icicle seafoods in Homer at $275 per month. And this is cost covered, at least partially, through grant 802. And so this is the last field office that we maintained. We did have one in SICER, which the SICER Science Center wanted back last year. And so we entered that contract. So this is the last field office space that we have. And again, it's funded through 802. It's partial. The Dutch Harbor Apartment, I think I've already gone through that in sufficient detail, so I won't spend any more time on that. Okay, review of staff and creation of the Fisheries Policy Branch. And so there were five documents there that were requested for additional information, and I'll step through those. Provided at Paper Information Paper O1 is a full and detailed description of the IPHC secretary structure and each member's team members' roles and responsibilities. This is something that has been in development over the last five years. Prior to that, many of the position descriptions were either 10, 20, 30 years old or consisted of a single paragraph. We have gone through as a team, reviewed everybody's position, updated them. And as part of the annual individual performance evaluation process, reassess those BDs against the current activities of that team member to make sure that they're updated. It has the advantage to ensure that team member knows exactly what they're supposed to be doing. But also putting it as part of this compendium, that all team members know what everybody else is supposed to be doing as core responsibility. So for me, this is, this has been a significant improvement in our HR, clarifying our HR elements in terms of core roles, responsibilities and functions, and also allows us to compare those against changing needs and directives from the Commission, which is something that we're discussing as part of this direct request for information. There was a request for, and so I wasn't going to go into any detail into that core structure. I'm making some assumptions there, sorry. Slide 48.
So the Fishery Independent Setline Survey.
Correct.
Speaking against brand.
No, so this is Kayla and her team. So these are the team members who are directly managing the operations of Fishery Independent Setline Survey. Under the Quantitative Sciences Branch is the Stock Assessment. So Dr. Stewart, Management Strategy Evaluation, Dr. Hicks and Modeling, Dr. Webster. Who, by coincidence, I also act as the branch manager for Quantitative Sciences as well. So they all directly report to me as well. Maybe I'll go back there for a second, know where you're leaning.
So what's the difference between the two, quantitative science and fishery independent set, sort of inspired tasks?
So the Quantitative Sciences Branch are our quantitative scientists now, literally the core scientists who are undertaking any of the quantitative analysis that the Commission requires. So stock assessment for Dr. Stewart, MSc for Dr. Hicks, and any of the modeling work or any other work in support of the stock assessment. So they are in a different category in terms of their elite sinus. So PhD-level positions and the Fishery Independent Setline Survey are those who are implementing the operations of the Fishery Independent Setline Survey. So coordinating vessels, coordinating field staff, shipment of gear, ensuring that the data in the field is collected in accordance with the needs of the organization, which has input from those quantitative sites. So one is the analysis side, scientific side, and the other one is the operational implementation. And we have had discussions in the past about applying a portion of Dr. Webster's salary to the Fishery Independent Setline Survey because he spends a significant portion of his time analyzing that data with the budget, I guess, limitations of the survey in recent years, we decided not to go with that path. Just because we would put it into a negative scenario, substantially negative.
Well, just I noticed that a little bit in the laboratory, usually that that used to be under the biological ecosystem.
It did, correct, sorry, through the through the chair. And so that team used to be. And so that team used to be under the biological ecosystem sciences branch. We moved it across because it's primarily associated with with processing and data basing of the age pages. And it made sense to put it under the fisheries data branch structurally. With that branch manager position currently vacant and we're not recruiting for it, that that team has moved back under the supervision of Dr. Planus because he's experienced with and I'll get into a little bit more about that. A bit later as well, about how we're doing a temporary upgrade among teams.
So I think I read in one of the documents for this that you have five branch managers or managers, maybe they're correct.
I'm calling the managers because myself and Andrea are also included in in those in those levels.
Okay.
So I'll I'll step through them. So here, myself and Andrea within the executive management team, within finance and personal services branch, Andrea is also the branch manager. Fisheries data branch, this position is currently vacant and we're going to discuss about whether we want to fill it. We've actively decided not to fill it at this moment. Dr. Planus is the branch manager for ecosystem sciences. I act as the branch manager and for H R purposes and science management for quantitative sciences. And Dr. Hudson is the branch manager for fisheries policy. So we have one, two, three, plus these two, five, the total of them up. With one vacant. In terms of staff time spent on non-for duties, we've done a bit of an assessment on on those activities. Eighty odd hours for three staff at the moment on the sable fish components. I know that's gone up substantially in the past week, but again, it's not something that would necessarily be annual. So the start of the grant at the moment is where we're formulating. The rest of the staff also undertake activities such as affiliate faculty and teaching. And a listed team put together the hours they spent last year, for example. Dr. Stewart, Dr. Hicks and Dr. Webster both all spent around forty hours each year as affiliate affiliate faculty and teaching. So it's about a week a year time. Domestic agency support, the team does, whether it be stock assessment reviews or M S E peer reviews for G F O or Noah, M I M S and others. And again, we try and limit that to roughly maximum of a week a year. They will vary depending on the needs and the requests. And so the the main one there that sort of stands out is that Dr. Stewart sits on the S S C for the sweet fisheries management council for approximately six weeks a year. And so that's that's a significant component that that he supports. Fisheries Management Council on. And I think the rest are all relatively minor. Haven't included the sable fish components in here because there are another slide.
What's the S S C's for?
Science and statistical committee. So essentially it's like our scientific committee to review stock assessments, the data inputs for the suite of species that the council captures. Professional development, we have a flat rate included in all of our position descriptions and our F T Es of three percent. Doesn't mean that staff will actually attain that full three percent, but as an encouragement to undergo professional development, whether it be training on particular software or supervisory managerial training, those types of things, we just include that as part of general position descriptions. In terms of a budget line reflects that component. So it's H Q training and development in F Y twenty twenty-three, we had sixteen thousand dollars assigned. For twenty twenty-four, we have thirty thousand dollars assigned. This has increased up until twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and we've decreased it twenty twenty-four. Apologies for the small text, but I have a graph that has the same information. I just wanted to quickly highlight this because I know it's of interest, how many staff? Our staff numbers and capacity have changed over the last five years. You can see that we've more or less fluctuated between thirty and thirty-three F T Es or regular full-time employees. Put some notes there, we had the thirty-four in twenty twenty-one when we had the cross-training. There were fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, a number of staff retirements. We left those positions vacant for a period of time, I believe, and then they were filled just prior to to my arrival, I think in sixteen. Or temporary full-time. So these are our field staff in ports. We've ranged from eight to ten during COVID. Saint Paul was and remained shut down. And so in June, as I mentioned in twenty twenty-one, didn't fill that position. And our temporary full-time contracts, these were contracts that the commission requested using reserve funds, so not direct contract contracting party contributions. We hired an M S E support team member followed by a technical expert on M S E and also the socioeconomic project between the years of twenty-eight to twenty twenty. And if we just look at those in graphic form, might be a little bit easier to see. You can see that the F T regular full-time employees has remained relatively stable with the fluctuations that I've mentioned. Field staff in in yellow and and then those temporary contracts using reserve funds. We'll note that there's a proposed in twenty twenty-four of one of those temporary contracts, and that's just a proposal, an idea. It's not incorporated in the budget. And this is to support the life history modeler. We can find a suitable postdoctoral candidate and external funding to cover those costs. So that's what that is. At the moment, it's not in the budget that's being put forward.
No wonder here it says using reserve funds, but you're saying that you'd actually like to fund it externally.
So, yeah. So for the two M S E positions and
Yeah, those, no, I'm talking the
The the postdoc, we won't use reserve funds. So that's a slight wording issue. That will only go forward if we can find a grant to do so. And Dr. Planus has applied for Another question from commissioners was how many ports staffed? I think we covered that one, but also what's the cost of staffing each port? Put it in the averages here just to protect individual confidentiality for staff salaries. But you can see that the average board in Canada costs us around thirty-nine thousand dollars a year. So we have two ports there, so sixty-four, sixty-five thousand. In Alaska, we average around forty-three thousand dollars, so seventy-two thousand dollars.
Is this per port?
Yeah, this must be. Sorry, that's right. So yes, around sixty-four thousand for a Canadian board, seventy-two thousand for an Alaskan board. And then in off the west coast here, we use headquarters staff time to go up to Bellingham and do sampling and also there is the costs around twelve thousand dollars.
So we just need a few more headquarters in Canada and Alaska. Costs down.
And the only one missing from that is for just a bit of an outlier because it is a much shorter, shorter sampling period. And that prior to COVID cost us just over twenty-six thousand dollars to put someone to Paul for the season.
They even land fish in Paul's last year.
This year, I think they're considering opening. Now, there's a detailed description of the process or decision-making process that was taken to what what was termed restructure recently restructured the secretariat. I've included that just on these slides very briefly, noting that it's in a paper and then also in slides, words word for word. Prior to two thousand and sixteen, these roles and responsibilities were included within the program manager fishery statistics and regulations, who was supported by a number of partial F T E from other staff areas, which included the executive director and the assistant director. In two thousand and sixteen, or I think early two thousand and sixteen, the program manager retired. And these roles, responsibilities were attained by a new program manager up until two thousand, the end of two thousand and seventeen. When that team member departed, those roles were temporarily placed with the assistant director on what's considered a caretaker basis. But he did quite a good job at handling it. So we we left it there until we went through some structural changes with the assistant director role taking on responsibilities associated with finance and personnel services. Also, one of the reasons that we restructured the secretariat in terms of the assistant director roles, responsibilities arose from discussions that were undertaken throughout the second performance review of the I P H C. I'm not going to go into all of the details. I think you're very familiar with that process. But one of them was to come up with a clearer plan, this business continuity plan and separation of roles, responsibilities. I'm going to leave the governance components, efficiency transparency, the finance and administrative management processes that we underwent of course of twenty-one and twenty-two. Most of you are pretty familiar with those with those processes. But as a function of that, we worked iterally, iteratively with the commission and the commissioners at the time to improve the finance and accounting processes and management of commission funds at the secretary. This resulted in the development of a five-year program of work for finance and administration. It's not a public document, so it's not published, but I can certainly provide that to you if you need that as a as a refresher. And one of those components resulted in changes to sorry, skip over these two slides. It's just referring to the performance review recommendation itself. But one of them resulted in modifying the assistant director's roles and responsibilities for this most recent recruit. And as part of that, we combined two branch former branch manager roles into one. So they were the administrative manager at the time and the information technology manager. And so we reduced from six to five managers at that point in time and held that for a couple of years over COVID. We went through a number of iterative discussions with the commission about the roles, responsibilities and and development of a position description for an assistant director. And that was adopted and circulated in twenty twenty-one. And obviously we hired a new assistant director in twenty twenty-two. That new position description specifically excluded any of the fishery regulation elements and focused solely on the finance, accounting, personnel services and technology roles, responsibilities. That's all I have sort of in a nutshell, but I think I can talk about openly.
What policy exactly is the policy division looking into? I'm just, I have a different thought of what policy is and I'm struggling to see.
Thanks. Thank you through the chair. And so the position description for the fisheries policy branch manager really has a couple of core components. The the first and foremost is visual regulations, so policies surrounding the formulation of fishery regulations. And that position manages that process, working with contracting parties. The domestic agencies from each of the contracting parties in supporting that process each year. So that's sort of a three, three-month process, three to four-month process, intensive process. In addition to that, the commission had in the past, and that's our understanding of moving forward, requested that we provide advice on any proposals that were received for fishery regulations, whether it be from stakeholders on the implications and then also from what we're determining implementation notes associated with those regulation proposals. Through the restructure, that position has also taken on H R roles of a manager. Knowing that we reduced one manager, so that forms sort of one of the other second of the third leg, so to speak, for that position. And then finally, just more of an advisory role, attending the council meetings, the the HAB meetings and keeping abreast of those types of fishery policy interactions. And so fishery policy coming out of the HAB, fishery policy coming out of the North Pacific Fisheries Management Council and the Pacific Fisheries Management Council. That role has had a significant role to play in the transition of the two-way management, for example, in facilitation, working with our team and the team from the west coast region. Those kinds of roles.
Yeah, because it used to be referred to as regulation or and then it's clear to me that that's sort of the main purpose. It's just curious why. Change.
Oh, I think you said H R roles as a manager, Dave. Do they, I think they had actually fine reports under this branch.
No, through the chair. And and so by that, I mean a general management roles. So we have the management team, which consists of the five managers. So myself, the assistant director and the three branch managers. And and we cover, that covers off on everything to do with the organization, whether it's reviewing H R policies, whether it's reviewing recruitment practices, anything to do with the sort of internal H R review.
Dave, a question about the research.
I can bring it up for you exactly from memory through the chair, sorry. Nine hundred and eighty odd thousand dollars at the end of the last fiscal year, and that hasn't been touched since.
And so, you know, I guess going a bit back in time, my recollection is that we would like to see it higher. So I guess the question is, are you concerned that we only have roughly a million?
Thank you for the question through through the chair. Yeah, I I think as as I mentioned at the finance and administration committee, there are concerns there. And and one of the concerns are scenarios such as the eight oh two grant that has also led to that being flagged, where if we are incurring expenses that aren't budgeted for, we either have to dip into that reserve fund or make other cuts elsewhere within the operational budget to pay for those expenses. And so I I am legitimately concerned with the current level moving forward. We are experiencing increased costs across the board and that's reflected in this this new budget. And if that budget isn't realized, obviously we need to make the service cuts, but there is additional risk associated with only carrying.
My recollection was it was in the order of one time, I think, two million and then I think we talked to maybe one. Best practices for that for an organization of this size, some some percentage guideline or something like that?
Through the chair, generally, you should, there are companies who will try and carry a hundred percent of their annual budget in reserve. We've, it's it's also generally accepted that fifty percent of your budget being carried in reserve is acceptable. But the key factor is your income stream. And we rely on contracting party contributions being delivered by one October for the first day of that fiscal year. And there are already substantial costs that are being incurred prior to that. And depending on when those contracting party contributions are received, you want to make sure you can cover your expenses in that period. We have received those contributions, everything from the tenth of October, so the tenth day of We have received those contributions, everything from the tenth of October, so the tenth day of the fiscal year through to the following May, which causes significant concern. And so if there is a way to guarantee, and I don't think there is, but if there was a way to guarantee that you receive it in the first three months, then you want to make sure that you at least have three months reserve as a minimum so that you can pay salaries. If it's likely to be uncertain, then that uncertainty factors into the amount of uncertainty.
So is that where the difference came from our deficit on the FIS?
No. So, so you mean the, no, the, the deficit for the FIS last year was due to increased contractual costs, fuel costs.
Deficit, would we have had four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars more in the funds you're talking about right now?
So we not have that deficit. You know, so it's, it's a slightly different pot of, it's a different pot of money. And so there, there is a reserve for the FIS as well. And so that sits around a million dollars as well. And so there's the ten, twenty, thirty reserve fund, which is the fund fifty. And then fund forty has its own reserve. It's sitting around, or I don't want to put that now, it's probably zero at this point because we have a lot of free FIS expenses such as bait. And so at the moment, we're drawing on contracting party contributions on a temporary basis to fund the FIS setup.
So if you were to grade the financial stability of the IPHC at this time, maybe just totally awesome, be not so good for our.
I would say we're at a five, five out of ten. Primarily because of the reserve for the FIS being insufficient to cover preseason FIS operations and expansions. And the one million dollars partially being utilized to offset those FIS costs because we, we are short in the FIS reserve. And therefore that one million dollars is really only about five hundred thousand dollars for operations, which is only two or three months salary and on costs. But noting that we're funded by two federal governments, I'm sure you will come for the rescue. So that's why you go by instead of ten or two rather.
So just on the just on the, there was a decision at one time to run down the reserve fund. And I'm just curious rationale behind that decision because now we're in the exact opposite position. We're like, oh, we have built that up and ran down. So what was the rationale behind, hey, we got too much money, we got to burn some.
Well, I wouldn't phrase it a little bit. My recollection is that the reserve fund was north of four. We felt that that was too large of a reserve. And I get, I think we've gone for various reasons down too low. And I don't think a million is enough to really provide comfort for us clearly for the secretariat. And that's why I think my recollection was that we talked about one and a half to two million. We're a comfortable place to be. And four was too much. And why we can eat that thought was, don't need four million, but we certainly need some between one and two. Given the way inflation's going, it's probably.
There's an old adage in fishing. To become a millionaire in fishing, you have to start with five. So you were on the right track.
And just to add to that, I think most of the drawdown on the reserve was spent on the expansion of the fishery independence set line survey. Expansion series ran over five years and ended up in two thousand and nineteen. And that was intense sampling in the areas that we knew were revenue negative in terms of fishing areas. So that drove down and it drove down one year earlier than expected. Chair, so that sort of wraps up the overall presentation of the general item four. Under other business, we did have the IPHC fishery independence set line survey. And there were a range of additional topics requested for other information. We're still working on those because it is quite challenging to compare charter region by charter region over time, noting that there were different sampling rates and the like associated with certain areas over time. We do have that together, but given time for this meeting, maybe there's something we can discuss over the next day or two informally. But also it's a matter of putting up some extensive spreadsheets and worksheets on the screen to walk you through that. So if you do have time to go through that rather than, but we don't have the information ready for you to put on the screen at this point anyway. And so then it really comes down, if you wanted to have a discussion around long term revenue neutrality as a principle or whether you'd like to hold that discussion for, for that information as well.
Seems like we give the information to have a conversation.
So there are prices being offered now in Haiti, in Seward and Canada. You looked at those relative to your projection?
Thanks through, through the chair. They are low. You're right. We have, the team has redone the simulator for the fishery independence set line survey. But the, the average price that we're seeing is still slightly higher than what we're touching. So it's, it's the moment where we're content. But with other on costs, we're now looking at a deficit of around three hundred thousand dollars. I think at the annual meeting, we were talking about a hundred and fifty. And now we have the contract signed, we have the bait purchased, we have the staff hired, contracted rather. We know more precisely what those expenses are. And I, I know maybe over the next day and a half, I'll put that simulator back up for you. Dear, what we're actually looking at. You can play with that price as well.
Chair. Can I ask one small question clarification? When we go back to the FAC paper that was presented for the annual meeting, the Canadian contribution was one point zero one nine. A large difference.
Absolutely. And so through the chair, Andrew and I went through the budget in detail, thinking we might be able to find some cost savings. In doing so, noting that we are now in April and most of the benefits information, contracts and costs come out early in the year, late in the fiscal year, but also early in the calendar year, which is not consistent with the annual N F I C meeting paper proposals. We were able to put in more precise expenditures for primarily benefits. So we, we know exactly what the health insurance costs are. We know exactly what our cancer care coverage is going to be. We know exactly what X, Y, Z are going to be. And that's what those minor tweaks, we'll call them. Just a more accurate budget rather than estimating those thirty days prior to the FAC meeting, putting that up for the FAC and the commission. Now we have the precise expenses, the precise expenses rather.
It's the percentage increase over the last year.
It is about eleven. From last year. That's maybe it's ten point eight three.
I thought that was a three year.
Correct. And I think that was the way the sentence was written in the paper. It averages out as a three percent increase if we hadn't had a frozen budget by twenty twenty one. So from twenty twenty one to the current, it is this ten point eight three percent increase overall. But it's literally from last year to this fiscal year because the budget was frozen. So it would just provide it as a three point whatever percentage it was to give you a reference of what it would have looked like if there had been a constant increase over that four year period. So that's, that's all I have, Chair. How you'd like to proceed, whether you'd like to adjourn for additional discussions or whether you would like to write an indication how you'd like to adopt a report over the next couple of days for your correspondence and in the budget associated with that.
Well, it seems like we still have some details to work out. I'm not quite sure that this needs to do that. Thoughts from other commissioners?
Well, and when would we be discussing over the next couple of days the FIS? And is that anticipated here or?
Through the chair, it's, um, the FIS history is, is a lot of detail that is going to require some close screen work. And so the short answer is yes. Yeah. We'll put it up. We'll walk through what we have. And that happens in an executive session later today. That would, that's up to you how you want to handle it. It just can just be an informal discussion.
Well, I think we need to have some discussion around. I think as far as the budget itself goes, it'd be useful if six of us could have a discussion around that. I'm sure. And, and I think this, we could probably set aside that discussion. Clearly we want to know it, but I think we could still make a decision around the budget. Be a provisional decision.
Well, I might, yeah.
Like we could make, I guess what I was thinking, John, is we can make a decision, but everything else with the exception. But I, I, I think on the FIS, I'm wondering. That will be of interest to others. I don't know, Dave, in thinking about the information you plan to present, whether you think it's more appropriate for an executive session versus as part of this special session. If there wasn't content that you thought would be more appropriate for executive session, I suspect it's probably a conversation that might be a couple people outside this room that would be interested to listen to. So I wonder if there's sort of like a bit of a sequence here where we maybe have another part of the discussion that is open to attendees outside this room that's about the FIS. And perhaps then we shift to an executive discussion that gives us sort of the latitude to talk about the, these various components of the budget in more depth based on what we learned this morning and plus the FIS discussion.
Through the chair, in terms of the FIS, I think it would be, it could potentially be very clumsy. Because the material is, is on a number of very detailed spreadsheets and it's just not going to be visible in any case on the screen for anybody listening in. And I think there's going to be a lot of just manual comparisons of charter regions and over the years. Probably more relevant though is that it doesn't actually have an impact on the contracting party contributions budget decision. Because we come back at the work meeting and then the interim meeting and present you with the revised FY twenty twenty four budget for this. And so it's, it's not until that November meeting that you're truly adopting of this budget based on the design you choose for next year's fishery independence set line survey. So that column under fund forty is with a big question mark on it in any case. So if I was to suggest a forward of this, it's to work through those details when you have time over the next couple of days. Put some thought into that and then either at the work meeting or and or at the interim meeting, have a robust discussion around long term revenue neutrality as a, as a, as a goal and objective. And potentially what that twenty twenty four budget would look like for this. Rather than having that as, as a public meeting at this point, because I think it's just going to be really clumsy. And, and that would mean that the decision is surrounding the special session budget decisions. You already provided some direction to, to us, noting that we're only slated for the morning as a public, public meeting. If we were to close out the special session, you would adopt a report over the next couple of days for the special session and then make your final budget decision for twenty twenty four, as we did last year through correspondence. You would adopt the budget template. That's how we did it last year.
That's helpful. Thank you. That's a deep before we close out. I think so.
Thank you very much, everybody. So we'll sign off. Thank you, everybody who's been listening online. What's the session, Chair? Thank you.